Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to call to order the April 19th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Kader.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Rednick.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
And could you please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We will move right along to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Statements. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the Commission on any matter not on the public hearing portions of the agenda. If you're here to make comment on Making Downtown Bakersfield High-Speed Rail Station Area Vision Plan and Final Environmental Impact Report, man, there's a lot of words. This is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission? If so, please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name's Eric Giroux. I'm talking about the proposal to rename Stone Creek Park, which has now been referred to the Planning Commission from the City Council. I'd like to preface by saying I do know the difference between Sikhs and Muslims. I've traveled extensively around Punjab, including the Golden Temple, and I actually observed the local customs while I was there, instead of petitioning to have them changed for my convenience. Saying that opposition to this petition is based on ignorance or bigotry is frankly pathetic. It's pretty funny to be called a bigot by the ethnocentric Jakara movement that has a problem with Hindus, has a problem with Muslims, has a problem with everybody else, and uses the racial slur "ghorah" to refer to white people. The problem is not that we know too little about them, the problem is that we know too much about them. At last week's City Council meeting, we saw the significant community opposition to this petition. Put simply, the community does not want it. Unfortunately, this doesn't matter to the Jakara movement. They do not want dialogue, as they claim. They want this political stunt to, in their words, force the community to learn about their political goals abroad. Quite frankly, they should be ashamed of themselves. As a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, the Jakara movement is explicitly forbidden from engaging in political activity. This also goes for the gurdwaras or temples in which they hold their meetings. There's good reason for this. Last week, we saw, in effect, little old ladies being bullied by the Jakara movement from Berkeley. That's exactly what the laws are designed to prevent. Unfortunately, what we have learned from this petition is that the Sikh community has a dark side. Most Americans are unaware of this because of its main goal, the breakup of India to form an independent homeland of Kalistan, is directed externally from the USA rather than internally. I would urge everyone in this room to do your homework about Sikh militancy in Canada and the terrorism, violence, stabbings, kidnappings, and political assassinations that it has spawned. The serious stuff. Unfortunately, too many Sikhs, not all but too many, have revealed themselves to be a bad kind of immigrant. Instead of appreciating the blessings of freedom, they use America's open society to settle ethnic feuds back home. In Canada, they push actively to have free speech, our precious First Amendment rights censored if it offends them. Our Constitution wasn't written for that. Let me conclude by saying that we will use every legal action, including legal action, to prevent this petition from happening. It would be a shame to waste precious city funds on a lawsuit, but some things are worth fighting for. Don't blame us, blame the Jakara movement up in Berkeley. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the Commission in the public? Please come forward and state your name.
I also just want to state for the record that that item's been referred to the Planning and Development Committee, which is a City Council Committee. Those meetings will be held in Conference Room A at some time in the future, but it will come back to Planning Commission at some time.
Thank you. And if there is someone that's requesting noticing, they can get with staff, and staff can contact you for any further meetings.
Okay.
Could you bring the microphone down to... Could you bring the microphone? Thank you.
How's that?
Much better.
My name is Janie Gurr, and I'm a... I've got another little slant on the renaming of Stone Creek. I've lived in Stone Creek for many years peacefully. I respect all the cultures and religion and races in the area. We've lived very quietly all these years, no issues whatsoever, except for outside... What's the word for it? That come in and vandalize the park and do other things. But anyway, that's another thing. Many have lived in the Stone Creek area since being established. We have celebrated many happy occasions with family, friends, and churches. People of all races, cultures, and religions have enjoyed Stone Creek Park for over 20 years and still do. A great deal of my neighbors feel we are being forced to accept renaming. This was a complete surprise to any of us, causing a lot of resentment, uncertainty, and losing trust. Parks do not belong to one group, person, religion, or organization. They belong to everyone. Do not support the renaming. I know eventually it'll come to you guys. There is no... This is showing no regards to... For all of our religion and races and cultures that use the park. I hope we... I hope you hear my voice. There is so much more going on in renaming Stone Creek Park. There is a divide... A division against this in the group, and it's not your everyday person. Anyway, we... And lots going on in the background that you're just not aware of. We do not have the support of a huge movement financially backing with a tax-exempt status. Our expenses are not deductible. We work very hard trying to be good citizens and raise our families. We want the right to enjoy the park for everyone. Thank you. Hear our voice.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Sorry about the parking space, but I had a comment here. This is more about the same. My name is Ingrid Henderson. It is unfortunate that in today's political climate, whether in Europe or in the US, you cannot have an opinion as simple as changing the name of the park because you will be called ignorant, racist, or some other label. Let me assure you, I am neither. We oppose the name. It does not reflect all cultures present in Stone Creek. I have moved from Germany to the US a second time in 1995, and Stone Creek has been my home. So it kind of feels like losing a piece of your heritage again. And my thinking is, there are three temples in a three-mile radius. I cannot imagine that if you were born in the US and raised among Americans that you feel excluded from this community and you need to have a park named after somebody that is not known to anybody in the US, or very few. So, which brings me to the question, why this park? The petition starters do not live in Stone Creek, don't go to school in Stone Creek. Stone Creek Park should not be renamed, even if it doesn't have a creek in it. A writer at the Bakersfield Californian mentioned that. I appreciate the diversity in our neighborhood, but if one group is renaming the park after a person not known to most, then I'm feeling left out. There are countless heroes that saved Jewish people during the Nazi time. They deserve a park, too. I did not come to the US wanting America to cater to me. Again, why this park? It is my understanding that it was suggested to the Jakara group to possibly name a new park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to just say that due to public noticing requirements, the Commissioners... The Commission is not allowed to take any comment or action on any item that's not on the agenda. So as I said before, if the speakers need... Would like contact with staff here, please invite you to do so. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items. These Agenda Items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any Commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate consideration? Not seeing anyone. If not, may I have a motion to adopt Sappis' recommendation on the consent calendar non-public hearing items?
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Bell, may I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. And Madam Clerk, is this... This is a roll call, though. Thank you.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kader.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rednick.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving right along, Agenda Item Number Five. Yep. We don't have any. We're going to move on to Six. So this is Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearings. The only item on tonight's public hearing agenda is the Making Downtown High-Speed Rail Station Area Vision Plan and the Fire... Final Environmental Impact Report. Ms. Kitchen, do you have a staff report for us?
We do, and quite a staff report. Thank you, Chairman Lomas. First, before we begin, I wanted to acknowledge that we have a new face sitting up here on the dais with me. I'd like to introduce Kevin Coyle, who's been hired as the new Planning Director. He takes my place that was vacated, oh, about a year and a half ago now. So we welcome Kevin from Delaware, and eventually, over time, we will transition the spot on the dais over to him, and he will lead you and advise you with very capable hands. And I welcome Kevin, so thank you. And we'll provide him an opportunity to give you some statements after the presentation today. So tonight, we have with us Cecilia Grego, who is the Principal Planner, that has been the project manager on this project. Cecilia and I have been working exhaustively on this project for over two years now. And we also have Eric with Rincon Consultants here to discuss the environmental perspective of this project. But this is the presentation and the final recommendation and the culmination of the two-year process known as the Making Downtown Vision Plan, and Cecilia will be providing you a comprehensive presentation on that tonight. And then afterwards, I will be available, and she will be, to answer any questions that you have. But again, the action for your Commission tonight is to make a recommendation to council on whether or not to approve the plan. So with that, I'll hand it over to Cecilia for a presentation.
All right. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm just... I'm really excited to present. Like Jackie said, this has been a two-year process. Me and her have been really been hitting this hard, and I just... I hope you really get to see... I hope we do a good job at presenting what the community has developed. Like I said, it really is a genuine group effort with various city departments involved, including the City Attorney's Office, Public Works, Technology Services, with support from Kern Cog, City Council, and most importantly, participation from residents. This is kind of me... My agenda for tonight. First, I'm going to talk about a little bit about how high-speed rail overall and how it's coming to Bakersfield, and I'll do an overview of the vision plan and our process that we went through. I'm going to talk about the potential that we learned that the high-speed rail can bring, our public outreach efforts, our existing conditions analysis. Then I'll get to the overall vision itself, which includes a phased development strategy. And then I'll turn it over to Eric, who will go over the EIR process. And then I'll finish it up with next steps. First, I'll just go over a little bit of history of how we got here. In 2008, California voters approved a broad measure financing the high-speed rail project, and selecting Bakersfield as one of the 24 station cities. As you can see, Bakersfield is well situated at the center of the system and provides an opportunity for high-speed rail riders to connect to Bakersfield as well as the rest of the Southern Central Valley. The Authority has indicated that this enhanced connection to the rest of the state will provide opportunities for economic development, job creation, and revitalization for our community. On May 14th... I mean, in May 2014, the Authority's Board of Directors certified a final EIR for the hybrid alignment that follows... That roughly follows the BNSF rail line through Bakersfield and... And with a proposed station at Truxton near the Amtrak station. Due to impacts to the community, the City of Bakersfield filed a lawsuit in June of 2014. In December of 2014, the Authority agreed to study an alternative alignment, which settled the city's lawsuits, and this alignment became known as the locally-generated alternative and generally follows the Union Pacific Rail Line and includes a station at F Street just north of Golden State. In May of 2016, the Board identified the LGA as its recommended preferred alternative alignment. And this action was kind of important to the vision plan process in that it gave the city direction on which station location to focus for the vision plan. In November of last year, the Authority released their draft supplemental EIR for the LGA, which compared it to the hybrid along with other alternatives, and identified the LGA as the preferred alternative due to having lesser impacts. And finally, just to sum up my little history lesson, the Authority released their 2018 draft business plan and I would just... And which really recognizes the high ridership and revenue potential of linking the Silicon Valley to the Central Valley, which includes stations between San Francisco and Bakersfield. And it really emphasizes the important connection Bakersfield has and being a key part of the success of their project. We know there are a variety of opinions about which station location there should be. While the vision plan followed the High-Speed Rail's Board's May decision in 2016 that includes a station at F Street, the important thing to remember is that downtown will be affected and potentially revitalized by a high-speed rail station regardless of its location. So just to go over the process, this takes us to the vision plan and how we kind of got to that point. In 2015, the Authority advised us that they're offering planning grants in select to station cities, and we signed an agreement in that... In December of 2015 to start our vision... Our station area plan process. In December, we hired the firm of Skidmore Owens &amp; Merrill to develop the station plan and help the city prepare for the benefits that can come with high-speed rail. When the city accepted this grant, we wanted to ensure that the planning process kind of would have independent utility. So to help the community think broadly and build upon past planning efforts, we wanted to launch an updated vision for revitalization of downtown. And just to go over this process that you see up on the screen here, like I said, in December, we started the process. In January through the spring, we started... We launched our... After we developed our work plan and our outreach plan, we launched our outreach effort. We hold... We held workshops, started developing existing condition reports, initial alternatives and strategies, and then we started the EIR process with a notice of preparation. Held our first community meeting was held in the summer of 2016 at the Convention Center. And then we also held a public scoping meeting for the EIR portion. And then towards the end of the fall, we released our three-part vision plan, 30-year vision plan. And then continuing on into '17, we started the draft of the actual vision plan, the implementation strategies, and also to prepare the draft environmental impact report. And during that time, we also held our second community meeting to get that final community input, which I'll talk about all of these processes in broader scope later on, but... And then in January, we released... Of this year, we released the draft vision plan, the draft EIR, held the adequacy hearing in here in January before your Commission. And in February, the public comment period ended, and then right now, we were looking at the response to comments and having our hearing before you tonight. That's just a little overview of our process. One of the first things we did was establish goals. You see here, one of the fundamental purposes of the station area plan is to establish strategic vision for the future development of the surrounding area of a future downtown station. The vision plan intended to address the bigger picture of downtown with these goals and looks at key factors and concepts that can affect the future development, such as land use patterns, urban design, infrastructure, multimodal transportation, services and circulation, access to parking, pedestrians, bicycles, open space, recreational opportunities, and the importance of arts and culture and more. And these goals really, we wanted to encompass and try to bring all of that into the picture. Now we're going to talk about the potential. Really, in the beginning of this process, we really under... There was really a great understanding that revitalization is kind of already happening. There's new energy growth that we've been seeing that represents in these pictures, and we really wanted to see where we can build on what is already happening. We know that downtown is the center of a fast growing... Of a really fast-growing city. I mean, we... There's still many, many housing and development going on. We're the ninth biggest city in the state and the 19th fastest-growing city in the country. We're over 150 square miles. We're one of the most affordable. Those... All those bring opportunity for just even more growth. This slide just kind of shows how the great access we have into downtown and how that is another growth stim... There's just so many... The Golden State, from the South, from Union, from Chester itself, from all the... And all those enhanced improvements we see going on on 24th and widening Truxton, all of that will bring great access into downtown. And this... These slides are just kind of show just some of the other things that we definitely saw going down, that we identified through this process early on. We have great cultural venues, great programmed vibrancy, historic buildings, new amenities. Downtown is the government center. Downtown is our central business district. There's great upper-floor opportunities, infill opportunities, new connections, and basically overall, just a new renaissance that we really wanted to build upon. And now I'm going to cover the public outreach. The public outreach process included a variety of community workshops, meetings, discussions with various community leaders and organizations. This process revealed that Bakersfield residents want to see a downtown that is vibrant, walkable, connected, safe, and full of amenities. In the route sheet... In the outreach efforts, residents shared their passions, their fears, their desires for the future. Although there were some disagreement on how to go about it, some... In some cases, the goals were always the same, a thriving downtown. You will see that this downtown vision came from group discussions, debates, sometimes just one-on-one dialogue on how this community... And you'll see how this community vision was developed and hopefully to create this thriving downtown. We held 11 community workshops in various locations throughout the city. We learned that key community values, including connectivity, vibrancy, compact development, and open space. At our first community meeting, we encouraged teams to be part of the open-house format to engage and create their own vision for downtown. Common themes were improving connectivity and a desire to maintain the character of Bakersfield. At the second community meeting, we expressed strong commitment to Bakersfield's future plans. The community expressed strong commitment to Bakersfield's future plans for revitalization and a high-speed rail station, with the only significant concern being a need for walkability and accessibility in the downtown area. Walkability and accessibility and overall connectivity were the common topics and discussions among participants. Many expressed the importance of making downtown a destination while keeping in mind local access. The community of Bakersfield is excited and hopeful for the economic benefits from new development downtown and wants to maintain the overall character and qualities that makes downtown unique. At the end of this public outreach effort, the effort resulted in the vision plan presented today that encompasses a whole... Almost a holistic community vision that incorporates key values, creates connectivity, walkability, and embraces great assets that are already here. I'm going to go over a little about... In addition to that public outreach, we also looked at existing conditions, and we did an economic market analysis, and we looked at case studies. And I'm going to go a little bit about what we learned from looking and doing this analysis. Basically, we learned that high-speed rail investments can make downtown competitive with suburban areas. High-speed rail will attract new jobs and diversify employment, provide more housing and repel, and prepare downtown for future high-speed rail development. With interventions, downtown can capture more of hotel and the retail market. Hotels indicate a downtown... Will locate downtown if there are more amenities to draw them. More retail options will drive additional housing and future office development. We learned that you can accommodate autos, and so they don't conflict with other modes of transportation. A well-connected street is offers opportunities for multimodal access and connectivity, right away... Ready... Almost right away ready to... For complete street enhancements. We learned about all of the underutilized parcels we have downtown and way we can... Or in almost like soft sites, sites not fully developed, where we can have growth and enhance develop... And infill development. We learned about the great alley system downtown and how we can use them as... Not only streets, but use them kind of like you see with the part of the Wall Street Alley now, how we can use them as great connections for pedestrians and other modes. We learned that Wall Street Alley is one of the main alleys that's almost fully intact and can be a great opportunity to make a connection through east and west of downtown. There's great open space opportunities. We learned that the high-speed rail viaduct itself can be a great... Could possibly be an opportunity to rethink and provide an open-space linkage to downtown. And in the end, one of the most important lessons was an economic one, and one of the best ways to fully realize the economic development potential of a high-speed rail station is to optimize and prioritize pedestrian and transit access to the site. In a way, it really is in line with what we learned with the community is providing those access connections in a walkable downtown. And now I'm going to kind of go over, after all of that, the vision, but first, I want to show a video that really kind of encompasses everything I just talked about, and you really kind of can hear from community members directly yourself what they see high-speed rail can bring and what this vision can accomplish.
We have to be united in thinking about what is best for our community and what can bring us into the future. So downtown Bakersfield is the coming together of the old and the new. We honor our heritage, and we welcome the new, embracing what is joyful, what is meaningful, and what is the future of our community.
In 2016, the City of Bakersfield began a partnership with the California High-Speed Rail Authority and with funding and resources from both the High-Speed Rail Authority and Kern Council of Governments, developed a high-speed rail station area plan for downtown Bakersfield. The Making Downtown Bakersfield process leveraged the grassroots revitalization efforts of local stakeholders already underway into an implementation strategy that seeks to connect the future high-speed rail station into the community's historic core. Over the course of the planning process, what came to light for all was that making downtown Bakersfield more connected, livable, and prosperous will also make the city and region high-speed rail-ready. The planning process began with a series of 11 vision workshops that engaged a diversity of community stakeholders in a conversation about the heart of the city. These workshops identified the community values that would frame a strategy for the rebirth of downtown. These vision workshops were the beginning of an extensive outreach campaign that included the creation of a stakeholder committee to oversee the planning process, one-on-one meetings, and presentations to... meetings and presentations to elected officials, nonprofits, and community leaders, an online engagement portal, and two large community open houses. The mobilization of the community brought the many downtown stakeholders together to share their efforts and in doing so, unite them into a more impactful transformation of downtown.
I'm excited about downtown, where our streets are transformed from just being a place because. Our streets can become places where we're connected through walking, bicycles, and other modes of transportation that we haven't even imagined.
To thrive, we need to leverage high-speed rail to create ladders of economic opportunity. You know, there are synergistic effects when we take high-speed rail and place it in urban centers.
More job opportunity, more business industry, which high-speed rail will bring with that station will bring that. That way, our people can get jobs and stay here, don't have to leave here, graduate, go somewhere else and find a job, and we need a more nightlife city here.
I think more events, maybe, because I noticed downtown, we don't, and Bakersfield, we don't commonly have them, especially down here.
We need more than one venue. We are growing here, so we need more diversity of entertainment.
I think really unique, open office space opportunities.
More participation among the, the overall community of the greater Bakersfield area.
I was born downtown. I care about it. It's got great assets, but it needs to be walkable.
We just need to generate some, some life downtown. There's just so many things that somebody can come downtown and experience that what we really just need are more people, more life.
From this extensive public input, an analysis of downtown's physical assets and projections of future growth, the city created a 30-year phased development strategy for downtown Bakersfield. This strategy focuses on reinvestment along the Chester Avenue corridor, creates a strong connection between the Mill Creek Linear Park and the historic core, and enhances the public realm to make for a more walkable downtown. Creating a ring of open space around downtown will both attract future development and support it with an enhanced quality of life. The vision for downtown Bakersfield is to make Chester Avenue the front door for the new high-speed rail station. Anchoring the station along Bakersfield's primary and historic commercial corridor will better integrate the development anticipated around the new high-speed rail station into the existing urban fabric, promoting the development of vacant parcels and surface parking lots while supporting the rehabilitation of existing buildings. This new mixed-use district will redefine the role of historic Garsa Circle, making it again the gateway to the community.
I love our community. It's warm, it's friendly, it's inviting, and now in the future, I'm looking forward to this opportunity where we can have community all within a vibrant, growing downtown.
Moving on, I hope that really gives an idea of where, where, you know, where our community came, where a lot of our, the feedback from the community we got in, in creating this vision. You can see that our community understands the opportunity that high-speed rail can bring and the potential to capitalize and see those opportunities to increase with strategic, both physical and policy actions at the local level. And our vision is kind of a way of how we, you know, figured out what kind of, what do we need to do locally to get high-speed rail ready? This kind of, this slide shows how we can strengthen and revive Chester Avenue as our historic Main Street and just the connection it really has as, as our, like on the video said, our iconic gateway into downtown, both in Bakersfield's history and its future. This slide shows that ring of open space to create an open space that, that connects and expands upon existing facilities such as the Mill Creek Linear Park and the Kern River Bike Trail, and, and how we can capitalize on the viaduct, on expanding and making that connection from the, the bike trail, or the multi-use trail actually, to the park. And also seeing how Chester fits in and also that another, one of our big ideas for creating, increasing what they call the public realm is the Wall Street Paseo. This is just another way we showed these various public realm enhancements to make it more walkable, doing that right here, that green space connected to the park, the Wall Street Paseo, doing a street enhancements and improvements, making intersections, expanding and making enhancements on intersections to make them more walkable. This is a rendering of what we can imagine that Wall Street Paseo, actually having, you know, the storefrontage face the alleyway. This is an example of all the bike upgrades and expansions where we can enhance connectivity. This is a rendering of what we would see Chester looking at, at the Wall Street Paseo crossing, so doing a safe crossing across Chester for that Wall Street Paseo. These are the transit connections and doing, doing a downtown shuttle, adding bus rapid transit lines along Chester and California. And with, basically with high-speed rail, we see a reimagined Garsa Circle, which kind of shows, you can see here with the station being here, Garsa Circle being here, almost having a Garsa Circle, what we're calling a pedestrian plaza, maximizing that connection to the downtown core. Next, I'm going to talk about that 30-year phased development strategy. From now to 2025, where the focus would be on infill and development of the historic rehabilitation, historic rehabilitations to revitalize downtown and to make, make downtown high-speed rail ready. So a lot of it is on the, kind of like the southern core of downtown. And these are the enhancements that we, that blue hashed area would be the, the focus development zone, and then starting to make some of those improved connections with bike and street enhancements. The next 10 years would be focused infill development along the Chester Avenue, making that connection to the future high-speed rail station. And then enhancing those enhancements, you know, extending that Wall Street Paseo, doing any kind of zoning changes or anything that would require future, future actions that we would look at to make to implement this. And the last 10-year phase is, is built out around the, the high-speed rail station itself, expand the prosperity downtown, again, and really make, start thinking about how we can improve regional connections as well. And this is the final strategy for that 30-year plan. A lot of the focus is, you know, around the station itself. These rings represent, you know, a node of development and also have, along those streets that make that key connection along F and also around 34th Street, enhancing those development areas. And now, I'm going to pass it on to Eric, who will kind of go over the EIR process that we went through for this.
You wanted to do this slide, so.
Oh, you want to slide.
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Eric Vonberg from Rinkon Consultants, and we were, prepared the environmental impact report for your project here. Just to go over again, you know, the purpose of an EIR is to inform the public of potential environmental impacts from the project, get community input on that, on those issues there, provide those, those impacts to the public, get a chance to receive those, for people to comment on those, and then that's where we're at today of, then we responded to those comments, and those are now, as a full EIR, ready for your recommendation to your city council. So, you know, the main thing with SEQA, it's a process. So you go through that, that process, and we've gone through all those steps that are required in, under SEQA to, to prepare this EIR and send out the draft EIR and the final EIR. And so, that's where we're at with the process. And as identified in this project, that we had significant impacts that can be mitigated under air quality, biology, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, the tribal cultural resources, and utilities and service systems. So that's where something was potentially, potentially an impact, but with the mitigation measure provided, it'd be a less, we can bring it down to the, below that threshold of a significant impact. And then there was the two issues, noise and transportation, that we identified as potentially significant and unavoidable impacts, that even with the mitigation that we are providing, those, those impacts could still be considered significant and unavoidable. And so those, those have been addressed in that manner, so we've tried to reduce them to the level that we could, but they were still determined to be significant and unavoidable, and so then that's where the city council will have to make a statement of overriding consideration on, for those in order to certify the EIR. And then as, another part of the process is identifying alternatives. So in this process, we have the no-project alternative is what would happen without the project, what would go on with those impacts. And then we looked at a couple alternatives, trying to reduce those identified significant and unavoidable impacts, which basically were to lower levels of, of development within the project. So, you know, we, we call it a low intensity density and then a medium intensity in design, identifying alternative two as the environmental, most environmentally beneficial impact or a project, is the term, as far as the, you know, it'd have less impacts than the project, but then you don't get all the benefits of the project when you, when you don't build out to the full extent of the project. And as well, there were some people identifying in the comments about looking at the alternatives. Under SEQA, you don't need to identify, study every alternative to the same level of, that you did your project alternative. When you're doing a National Environmental Policy Act type of document, then you do need to look at it at that level, but under SEQA, it's not required. So we submitted this, the, the draft EIR out for public review. There was the 45-day comment period, and as you see, we had 29 written comments received with eight letters from public agencies, and then there was nine speakers at, at this planning commission meeting when we did this in January. And so we've responded to all those comments, and that's what you have today is those, those issues. There were several, six that we really identified as main issues that came up in looking through all those comments there that we referred to as our global comments, and then we provided as well, global responses to those. That way, it makes it an easier document to read and that you're not repetitively hearing the same thing over and over again when we're responding to those comments. So it's just, it's a process under SEQA to make it a better document and provide a better, better information to the public. So the global response number one was, whether it was a project EIR versus a program EIR. So the idea here is a project EIR is when you have a specific project, let's say a building that you're going to build, and so you know it's going to have 20 stories, 100,000 square feet, you know, this amount of residential, this amount of commercial in that building, it's going to require this much parking, so you know, you know, the details of that project, and so then you can really focus in on those, those impacts from that project. Whereas on this, with this vision plan, it's what we call program EIR, looking at, you know, we were looking at what was the potential for growth in the 10, 20, and 30-year design horizons of the project, and the, doesn't specify exactly where that growth's going to occur, or what's going to happen over that 30 years, and as well, obviously, we can't predict the future, so it kind of gets speculative just to, to try to figure out details of projects 30 years out. So that's where we come into, that's why we use this program-level document, and then, then as specific projects come in, they can tear off of this EIR and saying, you know, there's certain impacts that were identified, they were addressed in this EIR, so then we're just going to focus on the specific impacts from that project. So the global response number two is identifying the project boundary, people concerned about the actual boundary of the project. This sort of illustrates how that, how the boundary was, was, was defined for this project, starting with the central district area map, and then expanding it out, you know, based on public inputs and, and where the high-speed rail station was looking at going and, and, trying to maximize the benefit from that high-speed rail station area there. And it's really just a framework for the future actions on it. So even if a project comes in, maybe it's not exactly within this boundary, there might be still some issues that can be identified through this process that, you know, still helps development within the area, you know, and the idea that this project isn't just to benefit within the boundary, but to benefit the whole, all of Bakersfield and the region as a whole. And then there was discussions of the F Street Station versus the Truxton Station. As you can see, there's the two different alignments that were identified, first with the hybrid alignment, and then coming back with the locally-generated alternative. And, you know, what's really important about this is that this, this project, regardless of which station is, is identified, it's the development of the downtown and looking at the vision for downtown Bakersfield that is the key. And as well, when you talk about it, the, the same kind of issue, but as far as the stationary plan, the plan was designed to take advantage of development from the high-speed rail station regardless of which station it was located in. So there's, there'll be benefits to the project, and, and it's also identified in that 10, 20, and 30-year plans of, you know, the first 10 years without really high-speed rail in operation at that point in time of, of how to make the best use of developing downtown. And then there's the idea of a vision plan versus a land use or specific plan. So the land use plan is like identified here, where you actually identify specific areas and you identify the type of land uses that are going to go there, maybe the densities that are going to occur in that area, even property development standards can be in there. So it's very specific information on how that, that land's going to develop, or even over a large area, which areas are going to develop. Whereas with this vision plan, it's, it's looking at, you know, again, that 10, 20, and 30-year horizon of looking at the maximizing of the amount of development that could occur within that whole area, but not necessarily identifying exactly where that's going to occur. There's some idea of, you know, where, where to concentrate the growth maybe, but there's no specific to that as far as saying you, this project allows you to build this many square feet on this piece of property. It's, it's this overall vision trying to develop all of downtown Bakersfield. And then the other one, there was concerns that because we identified a location on the map showing redevelopment within, you know, where the San Joaquin Hospital was going to be, again, that's not a zoning change or a land use change there, that's just showing potential areas of growth within downtown over the, the life of the project there. So there's, there's nothing in the document saying we're going to take out the hospital. It's, it's going to remain. Oh, I thought there was another slide.
There is.
Oh, okay. And again, here's the comments I received from, from the, the key, key agencies. We've addressed all these comments, either through the global comments or addressed them in the final EIR there. So if you have any detail, ask, have any question about that, you can ask me on those, but we've addressed all those comments in the public, and the agencies, and also from the public, and those are all located in that, this, what we're referring to is the response to comments, and that's, which you guys have and it's out for public as well. And so, back to the EIR process, we're here at this stage here of having the final EIR and then looking for your recommendations to the city council for certification of the EIR. And so that's the next step after planning commission is then to go to the city council for certification.
And that's it. All right, thank you, Eric. I'm just going to wrap it up with just some next steps. Right, like right now, before your commission, our recommendation is that you recommend to city council to adopt the downtown, Making Downtown Bakersfield Stationary Vision Plan and to certify the EIR. Our city council hearing would, will be in May, and if it is adopt ultimately a And if it is adopted, ultimately adopted, some of, I just want to identify some of the first implementation that will be going on. In our, in the vision plan document, we outline economic development strategy, and I just highlighted a few of those, which include infrastructure master plan, addressing housing needs and increasing downtown residency and increasing housing options, increased economic development activities in order to connect to property owners, businesses, entrepreneurs, developers, and to public, to public resources and incentives. Some of the input, the policy and physical actions, which are actually identified in a full matrix in the appendix of the vision plan includes, you know, possible overlay load zones or up zones, specific plans, walkability plans, physical upgrades, including, you know, those upgrades to the public realm I discussed, those transit improvements, bike facilities, parking facilities. And just the next one is just those key economic development strategy measures that we have here. All of these are discussed in the vision plan. We have a top 11 right now. And one of the final things we're working on is we're doing a comprehensive website update, which includes a GeoHub. And I kind of wanted to show real quickly our, kind of what we have started on the So, in here, we have the videos that we've already shown you. There's an initial call to action one that we did earlier in the process, and the one you just watched is here. And then, this is our GeoHub layer. You can click over here and turn on and off layers. Right now, it opens up, starting with the 10-year strategy. You can even open up each strategy and turn on and off layers within each. If, like, say, you just want to see the bike upgrades, you can turn off the other layers and just do the bike upgrades. But you can also, if you click on there, it will turn on all of them for each phase. But you can also open these arrows. And you can also zoom in on the map here. Say you want to look, hey, what's going on right here? You can just zoom in and get a better idea. You can also, in this little area right here, you can change the base map, which you can, like, say you want to see the aerial, what's actually there. There's different base map options, but you can go there and do that. And you can zoom out and then see and look around and see the type of improvements. And then, as we go on, our hope is, as, you know, different implementation actions are taken, or the different specific projects, we hope to update this and identify, you know, the implementation of the plan and also provide information on, you know, growth, the growth and development of downtown as this plan is implemented. So, and we also, the final thing we have after the map is that animation simulation, where you kind of does a fly-through of the vision. So, that's it. If anybody, I can go back to the presentation real quick. So, if anybody has any questions, that's our link to our website, and I'll just pass it on back to the commission.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing on this item is now open. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this?
Is that in favor?
In favor. Please identify yourself.
I'm Kathy Butler. I'm the executive director of the Downtown Bakersfield Development Corporation. I'm here this evening to thank the city for all their hard work. The DBDC was formed five years ago, and our ultimate goal was to create an urban development plan for downtown through the high-speed rail vision station, the vision that is helping us to achieve our goal. And we're very excited, as long as with the DBA, in working with the city and helping to prioritize and implement these goals. And we're very excited in helping to make downtown thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Chair Lomas, members of the commission. My name is Tony Chinoak. I'm a public information officer for the California High Speed Rail Authority. Our central regional director, Diana Gomez, was wanting to be here, but she couldn't. So, I'll just provide a few very brief comments. And Cecilia and Eric did a very good job on providing the history. Since 2015, the city of Bakersfield and the High Speed Rail Authority and many local stakeholders have been working together to create the vision plan that we just heard about to revitalize downtown Bakersfield. Bakersfield is a very, very important, integral part of our high-speed rail alignment to get ridership up and going as soon as possible. In that time, the city and the authority entered into a station area agreement to prepare for economic development and land use changes that would result from the addition of a high-speed rail station. The authority would just like to thank the city for the opportunity to provide comments on this draft station area plan and the EIR. We support the city's efforts on how these documents will help revitalize downtown Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Madam Chair and commissioners. My name is Troy Hightower, and I'm not really here in opposition to the plan. I applaud staff and Cecilia's work over the last couple of years, especially with the knowledge of the turnover and lack of resources you've had in the planning department. And I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome Mr. Colto to the planning. I'm sure they could use your help. My concerns are more that, at this stage, adopting and certifying the EIR, I consider to be premature, because the alignment, the locally-generated alignment, the LGA, is still in draft form and is not expected to be the environmental process to complete until October of this year. So, I think to adopt a station location based on alignment that is not environmentally cleared may be a little premature. I do have some concerns about the study effort itself. The study area does include both stations, and there is a map that's, I don't think it was in the presentation, if I could. This is a map that's part of the presentation, and you can see on this map, there's the areas highlighted in the dashed white line, which is basically a half-mile radius around both station areas. And typically, in transportation studies, which, I should add, I'm an independent transportation consultant, and then my comments are just based on my knowledge and professional experience. What I've seen is studies where typically included those half-mile radiuses. And you can see the red line of the station area does not really include most of the area within the dashed white lines on either station. So, that's a concern that I have. Another concern is that the station area vision, as has been presented, only focuses on one vision for one station area. And I think that, if you look at the plan, the 10-year plan, which I think is very good, which basically starts in downtown and goes east towards Mill Creek and to the downtown station location, but then it leapfrogs over to the F Street Station for 20, 30-year plans. I think that, especially with the fact that the high-speed rail funded this project in the tune of $900,000, that we could have also had a vision for the downtown station as well. The marketing study and the data that determined the demand for residential and commercial, that was done by the consultant, I've met with them a number of times, and they indicated that the development and growth was not specific to the F Street Station. It was for metro Bakersfield in general. So, either station could accommodate the similar growth. So, I think it would have been, it would give the public more an idea and everyone more an idea to look at the two different options. And not just for using our local space here and how to maximize our space here, but the high-speed rail station is of regional and statewide significance. And one of the things that the study has not done, which has been recommended in both the station area planning guidelines of the authority and the Federal Railroad Administration, is there hasn't been any discussion or report on the actual economic benefit of having a high-speed rail station in Bakersfield. Because what this means economically is we will become part of the Los Angeles economic basin by being within one hour, travel-wise, of a major economic region. We basically become part of that economic region. And I think that's a very significant thing that should be addressed in the study and in the reports. And finally, I'd like to talk about the EIR and the public process. The identification of the LGA and the F Street Station was not done with a public input. On the other hand, the, what later became the hybrid alignment and the downtown station went through lengthy public involvement, where there was a number of alternatives that the public was able to put their input into, which led to the final hybrid alignment and downtown station location. However, the LGA was just a result, my understanding, from the court settlement, but it did not involve public input on the alignment or a location at F Street. And then, also, I think the fact that the last public meeting was over a year ago, and there's been some changes in this plan, some of them significant, like the green loop. I like the idea of the green loop. It's a significant change in the plan, but what the public saw a year ago and what's presented now appears to be significantly different. I think having another public meeting, especially around the time of the public hearing, a public comment period, would have helped the effort and as well, more informed the public about this. And then, finally, I'd like to know, this new GeoHub, which I think is exciting, how that information will be distributed as far as outreach to the public, so the public can get involved with this effort. And with that, I would like to make one more statement as far as the High Speed Rail Authority and their selection process. They've identified F Street as preferred for the study process, but they've assured me that a decision on the station location will not be done until all environmental documents have been completed, and they have a chance to revise, to review and compare both. And in my opinion, whichever is going to provide the best economic benefits for the city and the region should be the one that's selected. And with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one out there, any commissioners who would like to ask questions of the public? Please remember, this isn't the time to express opinions, just time to ask questions. Commissioner Coleman. And if we could bring up the lights, please?
Thank you. That was my first question. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman's name from the consulting firm. No, this first.
Eric Von Bird.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. I just want to review a couple of things and just make sure, this EIR is comprehensive for either station?
Yes. It looked at the, it's looking at the vision plan, you know, looking at, really focusing on those, if you looked at the 10, 20, and 30-year plans and looking at the amount of development that they were anticipating to occur during both of those, all three of those alignments, and focusing on that, that's sort of looking at, were that, those, the impacts from development in those three stages there. So, it doesn't focus on that if the development would occur at the F Street Station or the Truxton Station. It's just overall, those, the development of the vision plan.
Because you made a comment about it being a vision plan, not a land use plan.
Correct.
Are we going to be going back and doing a land use plan once the, once the site is actually selected?
I'll let Jackie answer that one.
Commissioner Coleman, let me do just a quick little kind of wrap-up for the commission to kind of help frame some of the thought process and the conversation going forward. Cecilia and Eric did a great job presenting the process, very detailed. A lot of information was presented to you tonight. It has been presented to you before. In fact, the last public hearing on this was just a few months ago in January, when we did a very comprehensive presentation, talking about the details of the public outreach, the definition of the boundary areas, many of the issues that were touched on tonight. So, the question that we have now is, why are we doing this? What is it for? What is a vision plan? What does that even mean? The purpose of this vision plan, as Cecilia laid out, is to set the framework for a future land use plan, zone changes, things like that, that become actual regulatory rules. That's not what we're doing tonight. The purpose of this was to take on the community's input and sort of lay out the big-picture strategy. And then, to do an environmental document that comprehensively looked at all of that and created a streamlined process for the future, so that moving forward, when we do the zoning, the site plan reviews, the actual legal things that could make this happen, there's a streamlined process for that to occur. And so, a land use plan would be one of those steps in the future that we could pursue if we get funding and direction from council to do that.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Very well explained, Jackie. Good job. Any other commissioners have any questions at this time? Since we did have a, in favor and in opposition, I'll offer up a five-minute rebuttal period. Madam clerk, are you ready with that? Are you ready? Okay. So, if you are, would like to speak, each side will have five minutes. And so, try to make your comments succinct, because we'll time this. So, we will start with those that are in favor. We have five minutes. If there's anyone that wishes to speak in response to what was, has been said so far? Seeing no one, then is there, sorry, sir? I saw you move. So, are we in favor or opposed?
My name is Tony Amoranti. I'm a part of the Kern, our local Kern Coia Chapater Sierra Club. I'm part of our EXCOM. And I'm here to remind you that our local club has always been in support of the location of the train station, where we were first told it was going to be down on F Street, where the Amtrak station is. So, that's our position, and it hasn't changed. And I thank you for keeping us informed on this issue.
Thank you. Back into those in favor and wanting to speak in favor. Seeing no one, then we will offer up five minutes for those in opposition.
Good evening, Madam Chair and commissioners. Just a couple of points. The previous speaker mentioned the station downtown at F Street at Amtrak.
Downtown station by the library, where the train station is.
That one's on Truxton.
Sir, we can't have, we can't have conversation going that way.
Sorry. I just wanted clarity on the last statement where he mentioned the F Street Station, but he, my understanding is he really meant the Truxton location. What I wanted to respond to is to your question, Commissioner, about the study of both stations and Eric's slides, which the illustrations and maps that we saw in the presentation are not in the actual document as with the global comments. There was a slide that you had that had a red line area that, as the EIR steadier, if I if I recall, but it did not include the Truxton station area. So I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
And, and I think it would be a good idea if staff would include the map. They were very helpful, the maps and illustrations that went along with the global comments that are not in the actual final document. Thank you.
Anyone else? At this time, I will close the public hearing and refer back to the commission for comment and action. Any commissioners?
All right. You're anticipating I'm going to have something to say. Well, I, I hope the young people here are paying attention, because the plan that we're talking about is, you know, going to take 30 years to complete, and that's going to probably be beyond my natural life, so. So we're looking well into the future here. And I want to thank the staff for doing an excellent job of, of summarizing these things. They're very, you know, you can get bogged down in some of this stuff, so I really appreciate you guys breaking it down in an understandable way. I think that whether we ever get a high-speed rail station, wherever it is, I think it's important that we take these steps to plan a vision for what we want the downtown and Bakersfield to look like in the future. I think this is important, first steps to accomplishing that. So that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Kater.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to staff and to the public that participated in the process. I think it's exciting to see the culmination of, as Cecilia mentioned, a two-year effort. And I, I just really applaud the process and the sort of shift in mindset to downtown being something that we're trying to keep alive, something that we're trying to keep going, to looking to downtown as really being a key factor in how we grow and how we continue to grow as a region and as a community. And I just applaud working with the best knowledge that we had of high-speed rail, where it's going. I just, I applaud the effort by everyone involved to put forth really high-level vision, and I look forward to seeing how it implements and plays out in the nitty-gritty of code and land use and other exciting things. Thank you.
I agree. Anyone else? No, I agree also. And I, you know, it's not been said, but I like the idea of this plan, and it expanded downtown. It didn't just take a tiny little microcosm that we all consider downtown. It looked at the big picture. So that I applaud. And I will, I see no other lights, so I'll look for a motion.
Commissioner Lomas, really quickly, I just, I wanted to share one quick thing. This plan already has made a difference. In 2016, the state put out their 2016 business plan, which said that the first phase of high-speed rail would end somewhere north of Bakersfield. This is the 2018 version that came out just last month after this plan was released for public review, and I'm going to quote something for you. It says here on page 15, "In this draft 2018 business plan, we now define the Silicon Valley to Central Valley Line as service between San Francisco and Bakersfield. This line has a stronger ridership potential and higher commercial value than the shorter line previously identified between San Jose and Poplar Avenue north of Bakersfield." So results are ready. We all know that high-speed rail has its challenges. It may not come, and if it does, it probably won't be till 2025, 2029 potentially, maybe later. But the purpose, again, of this plan is to inspire Bakersfield to get out there, to take control of its own destiny. And I think our community has done this, and I applaud your commission and the City Council's support for us doing this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very good work. Commissioner Kater, you look like you're going to make a motion.
I am going to, and hopefully the joy of the city attorney, I'm going to read it word for word to not confuse things. I'd like to make the recommendation to City, to City Council for the adoption of Making Downtown Bakersfield Station Area Vision Plan and certification of the final EIR.
May I have a second?
I'd like a second, though.
That was Commissioner Coleman. And a roll call vote, please. Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Yes.
Thank you. We are into communications. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I wanted to give Mr. Coyle an opportunity to briefly introduce himself. I won't put him too much on the spot. I told him he was limited to a 45-minute presentation this evening, so thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here this evening as Planning Director. In Jackie's opening comments, she said that I was here to replace her. I think you will all agree that there is no replacement for Jackie. She has done a heroic job as Planning Director and as Community Development Director. I think my role is to help shoulder the load on the planning side, to allow her to apply her talents in other areas of the department, like building and economic development and housing. As something of a, a planning geek, I am very excited about the number of planning projects that Bakersfield has in front of them, this high-speed rail, air, station area vision plan being one, but a Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan update, as well as the, the general plan update. Every day I come to work, and I am amazed at how efficient and productive such a lean staff can be. I think the, the residents of Bakersfield and people who come to Bakersfield to work and recreate are being very well-served by the, the planning staff. And I look forward to being a part of helping Bakersfield realize its vision for, for growth and development. So thank you very much for the, the very warm welcome that I've received since I've been here. Tomorrow will mark the end of my fifth week on the job. I'm learning something new, actually several things new every day, and it's very exciting to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Commissioner comments? I see no buttons. And we are adjourned. Thank you and good night.